All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 28, 2018 meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. Before we get to our regular agenda tonight, we have a few housekeeping items, starting with the approval of the minutes from February of 2018 I would entertain a motion to approve.
May we approve the minutes?
Thank you, Commissioner Culver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Payton, thank you. Any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes nine zero. One abstention. Do we have any committee reports from committees that have met during the last month? Commissioner Culver?
Yeah. A couple of weeks ago, the MPO Policy Board met and approved the T-2040, which is a long-range transportation plan that includes all modes of transportation and it helps with our work here in land use, but really focusing on this region in regards to transportation planning. I believe we have that on our agenda for our mid-month in May. Will there be any other formal presentation at this meeting, or?
No, as it's adopted by the governing body of the MPO, it's more for information purposes. And we thought because of our mid-month kind of work session type of framework, it would be better to have it there and then discuss the implications for this body in that vein.
Yep. So we will see it, I think, May 9th at our mid-month meeting.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Commissioner Willie?
The Comprehensive Plan Committee met also, and we are digesting the public comment that came through in the winter and going through that chapter by chapter. So we have two chapters, last meeting, which were the community resources and the appendix. The appendix went very well. So, and we're also bringing in a few new members to kind of get them up to speed as we kind of finish up this public comment section of it, and then hopefully get it finished for this body sometime into the summer.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Any other committee reports? All right, then. We'll move on to our communications. Any communications from the public we have not received in our packet?
Mr. Chairman, I would just note that we didn't receive any by the 10:00 AM deadline. We did receive a couple of communications that were past the deadline, and as our practice and per the bylaws, we advise those authors that they were too late to be submitted for you. They may be here tonight to testify in person, however.
Okay. Thank you. Any written communication from staff, planning commissioners, or other commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Any written action, waiver requests, or terminations from the city engineer?
No, sir.
Is there any disclosure of ex parte communications? And these are communications that commissioners may have had with applicants or members of the public regarding any agenda item that are not known to the rest of the commissioners. And this is so that the public and all commissioners can know everything that every commissioner knows. Are there any such ex parte communications? Are there any declarations of abstentions from specific agenda items by commissioners? All right, then. Is there any general public comment on matters other than the specific agenda items before us tonight? All right. Seeing none, we'll proceed with item 1A, rezoning at 929 Arkansas at Al.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sandy Day.
Good evening, Sandy.
The item that is before you this evening has two parts to it, a rezoning and a variance related to the minor subdivision. Both of those elements require public hearing, so we'll go through that presentation. And because of the nature of this project, there is a number of things that kind of overlap as far as the zoning and the boundaries of the lot lines. While the minor subdivision itself is not in front of you, that is an administrative task. How that relates to the zoning boundaries and ultimately lot configuration and the variances are part of your purview. So to begin with the rezoning, the property includes RM 12 UC, our urban conservation, and then also an area that is zoned RM 12 that is not encumbered by the urban conservation boundary. Part of this area is the east half of Michigan Street right-of-way, and there is a portion of the property that is also Lot 7 Sinclair's addition that is developed as 929 Arkansas The purpose of the request really is to facilitate infill redevelopment of lots that are located on the end of the cul-de-sac on Michigan Street. There are two blighted buildings that are vacant. They are duplexes. And the project would reconfigure interior lot lines, align zoning boundaries to follow those interior lot lines, and then to facilitate that infill redevelopment. Many of the structures, other than the two duplexes that are proposed to be demolished, are going to remain. The other element of this project that is proposed to be revised, and that will be through a site plan, is the interior parking for the development. This is just an image of that minor subdivision, and the two variances that are associated with this project have to do with the width of right-of-way of Emery Road and how Michigan Street is terminated. Typically, a street would be either extended to the boundary line of the next property to facilitate that future development, or the property would terminate in a cul-de-sac to provide public turnaround, emergency access, and other public services. Properties that are involved in this project are highlighted in blue. The property that is 929 Arkansas Street is highlighted in blue. That includes the original Lot 7 and Lot 8, includes the parcel that's located along Emery Road, and then three parcels that are located along the east side, or I'm sorry, the west side of Michigan Street. Part of this application really relates to how we draw zoning boundaries. The urban conservation overlay district follows what the boundary is of the Oriad neighborhood. However, zoning extends to the center line of adjacent public streets. So for this reason, we see where this boundary is falling in the center of Michigan Street, the center of Ninth Street, as it continues further to the east and to the south for the Oriad neighborhood. When that original rezoning was established, the RM, at that time, RM 1 district had already included this little corner of that Lot 7. When the property was rezoned, it talks about being the east 175 feet of Lot 7. So that is the configuration of the zoning district we have today. Just intending to highlight what the surrounding zoning is of the property that we are working with. This side of Michigan Street, these several parcels are zoned RM 12 UC. This parcel is part of that urban conservation is zoned RM 32. The balance of this area along Emery Road is zoned RM 32, as is all of these lots. The only area that is zoned RM 12 is this piece that's highlighted in yellow and this piece that's highlighted in red that includes the right-of-way, as well as that little piece of Lot 7. Some of the surrounding land uses, we have a mix of residential uses in this area. There are a number of detached dwellings on individual lots. We also have 929, which is composed of a detached dwelling and several duplex units, but they are developed as a complex, and so that actually falls into the category of multifamily. And then we have some normal identifiable multifamily dwellings within this surrounding So the property is partially located in the Oriad neighborhood and then partially not located in the Oriad neighborhood. And that urban conservation district follows the neighborhood boundary and to the center line of the street. The property is covered by the Oriad Neighborhood Plan to the point where it includes Michigan Street on the east side, but does not extend over to the west side of Michigan Street. And again, this is where we're drawing those boundaries, is a function of what this request is. As far as the suitability goes, what this project will result in is an alignment of the zoning district boundaries, which will be more efficient for the administration of projects as we move forward in the future. And ultimately, what we get to is a little carve-out of the urban conservation overlay district as it relates to the new lot lines and the subject property as we work through here. It's just an image of what that lot line is generally looking like if we overlaid the proposed plat onto the existing parcel data. This area highlighted in pink is that urban conservation boundary. This is essentially the new lot line. This shows where those lots would be configured. There is a piece of right-of-way that would propose to be vacated of Emery Road, still retains that 50 feet of right-of-way we'll talk about in just a moment. This property has been zoned in this manner since the Oriad adoption of the Oriad Design Guidelines that established that urban conservation district. When the Development Code changed in 2006, the RM 1 district transferred over to the RM 12, so it's the same density following that boundary line. Some of the detrimental impacts and some of the gains that are associated with this project are outlined in the staff report. There certainly will be some additional units, so there will be some additional traffic that goes along with this. But right now, we have substandard piece of street. We have substandard dwelling units that will be redeveloped with this project. We have a significant improvement in off-street parking for those units as well. One of the things that we did look at was what the impact was to 929 Arkansas, specifically because it is part of that Oriad Urban Conservation District. And what I'm trying to highlight for you in the staff report and in this slide is that really this area stays the same. If you look at the units, obviously, we're not changing any of that. There's no change to access to Arkansas Street. And then the parking and the access, this is private access today with some substandard parking. This is a piece of the site plan. It's an early version of the site plan that shows that parking and then this entire area becomes access easement, so it's much more efficient and maneuverable by the public, as well as we've had fire look at it and sanitation as well, to make sure that all of those operations will be acceptable. When we look at the properties that would be combined on the west side of Michigan Street, we do see an increase in density. This is outside of the Oriad neighborhood and not subject to those design guidelines. Staff's recommendation for the rezoning is for approval. The two variances that I mentioned are the right-of-way width that apply to Emery Road and then the termination of Michigan Street, which we've touched on a little bit. These are the three criteria that we reviewed those variances' requests for this project, that the strict application would create an unnecessary hardship on the subdivider, that the proposed variance is in harmony with the intended purpose of the regulations, and that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. And the summary to all of that is staff felt that these criteria have been met, and so we are recommending approval of those things. With regard to Emery Road, it's 50 feet wide. It's a designated local street. That typical design standard would be for 60 feet of right-of-way. It is following the curb line that the applicant is looking at for their redevelopment project. That's where we're looking at that little piece of vacation of it. There are no plans to widen that. There are no projects that staff has been involved with looking at any kind of redevelopment. If there were improvements to Emery Road, we would probably look at those in terms of an easement dedication for any kind of sidewalk or road improvement or utility work that would need to go along with that. It's just a graphic of what this segment of Emery Road looks like. It's very consistent. As we talk about trying to widen Emery Road, we start putting those existing structures, which are not proposed to be redeveloped. They would have some issues in meeting their compliant building setback requirements. With regard to terminating Michigan Street, we did ask the applicant to provide us exhibit to look at what would a code-compliant cul-de-sac look like. That's 120 feet across for that right-of-way. And what that does is that eats into the available area to redevelop or to build. We end up with about 89, 90 feet. Of that, there is a 25-foot setback that applies to the building. There is also a restriction from providing off-street parking within 25 feet of a right-of-way. So that certainly does eke into what that area would be, and that really limits the ability to see any kind of feasible or reasonable redevelopment or infill in this already urban area. The slide on the right highlights where that access easement would be located. This is what is being proposed in lieu of dedication of a public right-of-way, and it provides full two-way access all the way around and connects back to the public street. In summary, what this project really results in is just a small bit of the urban conservation overlay district being carved out. In the majority of that area is the right-of-way of Michigan Street. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the two variances, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on this project.
Thank you, Sandy. I'm lucky enough we have some. Is the applicant here tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Warner with Paul Warner Architects. Sandy did a great job. This is, for how little of a project this is, it really is, there's a lot of little moving parts. But I appreciate all the work that Sandy and Scott have put in, and especially on this cul-de-sac that they've already mentioned. And we do end in a cul-de-sac. It's just a smaller than today's standard cul-de-sac, so we think that's a really good move. This is a good example of an infill project. A couple of things I just wanted to point out. The real work here is on the west side of the property, and all of that work is outside of the Oriad neighborhood and the Oriad Neighborhood Guidelines boundary. The property that is to the east, we really are leaving completely alone. What we're really doing is fixing the parking lot and the existing cul-de-sacs. I hope some of you had the chance to drive down Michigan and see the condition it is Here's an exhibit for the fire department. So as I mentioned, we do end in a cul-de-sac. We do provide fire department and trash truck movements way better than what exists there today. The minor subdivision. This is an aerial view of what's there. And we really have gotten lucky that the same property owner owns the Arkansas property, the sixplex to the north, is acquiring these two duplexes that are condemned. They haven't been occupied for years. We've been trying to get these from the owner for years. We finally made a little progress, and he owns the apartment project along Emery Road. So if it had been somebody else, the easier project is to tear down those two duplexes and go build probably two four-bedroom duplexes on each side, 16 bedrooms, and you don't improve the parking for the rest of the area. But they are in really bad shape. They should have been torn down years ago. But what this really does solve is the existing parking, the existing access around the property. Granted, we are providing more units. It's a little deceiving of the schematic site plan we've submitted. Eighteen of the 21 units are all one-bedrooms, so it is a higher unit count, but a pretty minimal bedroom count. So we think it's a great project. It's a good example of infill, and again, we really appreciate the help with traffic in Sandy and Scott and making a 60-foot cul-de-sac billboard. So happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. If there's any member of the public who wish to comment on this application, please step forward, state your name, sign in.
My name is Candace Davis. I live at 947 Louisiana Street in the Oriad neighborhood. I am here, and unfortunately, I had a letter that was not able to get to you. I also have a letter from Alinda Haskins that lives on 10th Street, which is at the very top of Arkansas. And basically, I will tell you what she has stated. We want to remind you that RM 12 and RM 12 UC is the lowest density in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is largely single-family structures that have been turned into these higher-density areas. But at any rate, RM 12D is something we're very sensitive about because it is the lowest density in the neighborhood, and that is the area just north of the stadium. What she, Ms. Haskins, suggests is that you vote no on this proposal, which does not take into consideration the needs of our neighborhood or other property owners. And my point being is that I've been a member of the Oriad Residents Association for years. I've lived in the neighborhood for 20 years. We've gone to great lengths to attempt to stabilize the area, and this is for renters and homeowners to make it a more healthy environment. This neighborhood plan that we have was completed about seven and a half years ago. The urban overlay district and the Oriad Neighborhood Guidelines were approved only last year. These documents were the result of years of work and many, many public meetings. They represent a fair consideration of the interest of residents and property owners, and it also indicates the location of differing density zones in the neighborhood, of which this is the lowest one. There are other zones that are RM 32. And I would like to say that Mr. Warner has been actively involved in all of these processes with the neighborhood and has had ample time for input. His request now to increase the density, to me, merely reflects his business interests. So my position would be, I support improvements, which are fine, but I would really love to see folks stay within the confines of the zones that exist and work within those parameters. So I'm not in favor of this zoning change request. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public input on item one. Good evening.
My name's Kyle Thompson. The League of Women Voters had a letter that they sent late, I guess, and Marcy Francisco was going to be here to read it, but she was held up in the Senate, and I wondered if I could read that.
Please. With attention to the clock. Three minutes is left. Thank you.
The League concurs that it is preferable to have an entire parcel located in one uniform district. The staff report comments that the development pattern along the east side of Michigan Street is not proposed to be altered by the change in zoning or modifying the platted lot lines. However, the new proposed parking, the duplex dwellings at Arkansas Street is a significant change to the development pattern. The argument presented by the applicant for terminating Michigan Street with cul-de-sac is that, quote, "The approval of the variances to terminate Michigan Street in a code-compliant cul-de-sac easement," no, compliant cul-de-sac, would reduce the area allowed to redevelop. Providing an easement in lieu of the right-of-way recognizes the need for reasonable vehicular access and turning movement, exactly the reasons that right-of-way is required. League appreciates the submitted of a concept site plan with the request. This site plan indicates a pattern of development that is inconsistent with the patterns within the Oriad neighborhood. A large parking lot behind duplex housing and parking areas on two sides of the single-family residence are consistent with intense urban development and not respectful of those lower-density uses. Not clear that cover parking could be developed for single-family uses in the future. The League recognizes that the current development in this area could be improved, but is concerned that the proposal for the highest-density zoning in combination with the vacation of right-of-way allows for an intensity of development that is inappropriate, given the adjacent lower-density properties. And personally, I was confused by the description of the project and some of the maps that were in the, so that I originally thought that the RM 32, that 929 Arkansas, the last fourplex, I think it is, would become RM 32 rather than a small part of it. But I would concur with Mr. Warner's observation that that area is a mess right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on item one? Seeing none, invite the applicant to respond to public comment.
Just a couple of things. I really think, you know, I know it's tough, and maybe everybody doesn't have the time, but I think if they had looked at the plan a little closer, they'd realize the real work is outside of the Oriad neighborhood. Just to Candace's point, that's where the lines were drawn. We tried to do a really good job about lining up the lot on the east, so it actually does line up with the Oriad Neighborhood Guidelines, and have left that section alone. And again, the work's really on the west side. And then to the League of Women Voters, I think it is important to realize that there is a cul-de-sac that works and that you can get around in the parking lot. So that's all I have, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll bring it back up to the commission for discussion of questions, Well, I'll start by saying I did have a chance to visit the site, and it is in need of some serious attention. My sense is that this is a suitable project, as Mr. Warner said, with the real work going on on the west side of the proposed Michigan Street improvement and parking lot. I don't find, I am sensitive to the slight encroachment of the RM 32 into the former RM 12 segment there, but my sense is that this is an improvement to this area that's very much needed and I think suitable for the existing zoning that envelops the proposed building on the west side of the street. I'm inclined to support it. Commissioner Sands?
Question for staff, Sandy. So the lots that are RM 12 on 929 Arkansas are not being changed, correct?
The lots, the lot boundary, the lot lines actually do change a little bit.
Okay. Is that that little pie sliver?
Yes.
Okay.
And the piece of right-of-way.
If the zoning is not?
Yeah. And then, and so really, when it comes to the concern on the Oriad Design Guidelines, it's the right-of-way plus the center of the street, but there is a sliver of boundary that's changing. Okay.
Commissioner Willie?
I have some questions, Sandy. I know there's a sidewalk on the west side of Emery. Does that go all the way to Sixth Street, and will that remain unchanged with the change of right-of-way? Because the right-of-way is changing on the, sorry, the sidewalk is on the west side, I believe, and the change of right-of-way is on the east side. Is that correct?
Right-of-way, when we dedicate right-of-way, it's to the center line, and each property dedicates their one-half of that. So basically, this property owner would be asked to dedicate essentially five feet of right-of-way. Typically, if we were going to get to that full 60, that would be their half of it. There are no plans at this time to look at sidewalks, certainly on the west side of Emery. We are still working through some of the site plan work for the project, and it will touch that Emery property, so I don't, I can't tell you for sure where we're at in terms of recommending sidewalk. There may yet be an easement that comes through the minor subdivision process.
But in terms of, you know, putting in more, and there's a lot of multifamily around there, and I used to live there, and I should remember, and I did drive Michigan Street, but I didn't drive the Emery side this time around. But... Okay.
There is. We've also been talking about additional internal connectivity through these properties as well.
To the West Hills apartment complex, isn't that the name of it?
I don't know that it'll go down that far.
Up to Emery.
Yeah, up to Emery. So you're saying sidewalk connectivity for, through the development?
Through the development to the public sidewalk.
Okay.
But that's a, that's a site plan element that we're looking at, yes.
Okay. Would that be just regular sidewalk or something that would allow, you know, 10-foot width or anything?
I don't, at this point, probably five foot.
10-foot usually comes anywhere we're doing a lot of these, right path?
I only ask because it seems like, considering who is likely to live there and where they're headed, might alter how they can get to where they're going. But I guess along Emery, it's six foot or five foot.
Yeah.
So the property on the east side of Michigan is within the Oriad Neighborhood Guide, is within the Oriad Neighborhood, and its current zoning is RM12 UC, right? To the west of the center line of Michigan, it is not in the Oriad Neighborhood, right? Correct. And that is RM32. So we're really talking, I mean, tomorrow, the developer could go raise those two duplexes and put an RM32 building right there, right?
They would have additional constraints with the cul-de-sac and things, but zoning would allow?
But the zoning does allow, right? So we're really only talking about that pie-shaped piece that is RM12 to line up.
I would say the...
I mean, I may be oversimplifying it just a bit?
No, I think, I think you're, you're getting the situation. In fact, the, a little bit of the irony is that right now, you know, we don't, we don't encourage split zoning, and in fact, that parcel right now has split zoning. So in some ways, we view it as a cleanup of zoning and matching lot lines to, to zoning lines, because today, it's a situation that we wouldn't do if we had to do it over again. We would probably try to go in and match it somehow. But all along, effectively, there is no difference in starting out with what we have today, and after we clean up and do some of this minor rezoning adjustments, the effect of it on how to apply the code and how what development outcome is the same, short of the cul-de-sac right-of-way constraint going on, onto the property.
So, thank you, Scott. If I can continue?
Please.
So, understanding that there's some right-of-way issues there, let's say we remove those two duplexes, we go to RM32 development, where would the parking be for that development, for that RM32? How many parking spaces can they do on-street parking there for an RM32, right?
They couldn't do on-street parking. They may be able to fit parking underneath a portion of the building. They could, you know, they, depending on how they, it's a design, it's a design exercise at that point.
Okay.
I like the project. I kind of like these creative ones where we have to kind of fix a little, you know, some errors that we had with the split zoning. We get a little bit of that. We fix something with a cul-de-sac that just truly doesn't work. I also do, in my, in my spare time, do drive a fire truck occasionally, and I would say that the new access in the parking lot is, is much better for something like that than what is this there now. I'm inclined to support it. I think it's, it touches the Oriad neighborhood very, only very slightly, and only in the way that it is redesigning the parking, which I think is a gain. I do have a little bit of concern about impermeability and, and, you know, losing a little bit of green space for that, but I do think that overall, it's a fairly urbanized kind of area around Emery Road, and this would add to that in, in a good way for infill.
Thank you. Commissioner Sands?
Can I ask a question, Candace?
Please. Ms. Davis?
So one of, one of the letters that you read said that we should make considerations for the neighborhood, but it didn't specify what the, what the specific concerns are with the project.
Well, I'll tell you, at first, seeing what you have here now is different. It looked like when we first got information that it was going to impact a couple of lots on Arkansas Street, and that would have been a huge deal. As things appear now, no, that doesn't look extraordinary. But, and the fear too would be, the more you decide to change things, we didn't want it to be an opening to then begin to put in higher densities and other RM12. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I'm, I think this is going to be my first project as a planning commissioner where I approve something, the Oriad Design Guidelines, and then I get to say, like Patrick says, from time to time, now we're changing it. So this is day one of now we're changing it. So that's my, that's my largest hiccup with this, is it's been approved for less than a year, and here we go, going down the road now. But infill's hard because you can't, you can't account for all the changes that are going to happen with an infill development, where you're taking down a property and putting up a new property or a concept. I, I like it, I'm just not sure which side of the fence I'm on.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, let me try to help and convince you. There's nothing changing the Oriad Guidelines.
Sure.
So this is not scrapping the Oriad Guidelines that we have.
Oh, no, it's not scrapping it.
I think, I mean, that, I appreciate Candace and, and, I'm sorry, name slips me all of a sudden. Thank you, Kyle's, Kyle's comments there, because it was tricky reading the packet. I had to go back on those maps multiple times to try to figure out, no offense, Sandy, great job. It's a tricky, it's a tricky thing to figure out where that property was until I actually got to the, the site plan that, and I know it's not finalized, but the preliminary site, that was where I started to crystallize on where that is. So I, I think we're, I'm supportive of it because I think, one, we're honoring those guidelines that we worked really hard to put together in the Oriad neighborhood. I bring up parking because we don't decide which side of the street we park on, whether when we're in the Oriad neighborhood on the left or the right. We're adding parking in a place that the neighbors in the Oriad neighborhood have told us parking is an issue. And here, when we're moving to higher density, we're actually providing lots more parking, and I think that's being, being thoughtful. Design-wise, I think it'd be awesome to put it underneath, but I'm sure that's a cost that we considered and decided not, not to do because it'd give us more green space, right? Maybe, considering some of the, I'm all over the place right now. But I mean, maybe at some point, we get rid of some of this pavement, put some grass back because, you know, we've got different, different travels. So maybe it's good. I, I think it's a really nice way of keeping the Oriad neighborhood in that RM12. It's already RM32 over there, so we're not getting that much of a change. We're just cleaning it up. I think Scott said it really nicely. It's cleaning it up and adding some nice parking, some better drainage if you went through there, better curbs. We got bike racks, we got sidewalks, got a nice little stairway up to Emery. So I think there's some real benefits for infill development, so I'm supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
I have to be the devil's advocate here, but I look at this, and I don't know, it's hard, looking at the, the site plan here. I can't help but wonder, does it fit? Is it consistent with what we want? I mean, here's, here's what I want to know, and I guess I'm not getting a very good sense of this. If you go out west and you have these apartments that are sort of surrounded by parking lots or have these huge parking lots, and it's all based on parking and there's nothing around it, you have a very different sense than you have when you move east and you get closer to downtown. And parking is an issue, but one thing I feel like we don't often talk about, and I don't know that our policies address anyway, so it, it may be a moot point, is that change in the feeling, where is this a development that feels like a West Lawrence development now because of the parking lot? Does it change the feel of the neighborhood? I guess.
I guess what I would take to respond, Sandy had a slide, if you could go back up, Sandy, about sort of the wider area, and she mentioned kind of the more conventional multi-dwelling projects in the area. And I think if you've kind of studied that in greater detail, you'd find that it, the neighborhood's larger than the RM12 at the stadium, north of the stadium, and that there were some reasons why I think some of our applying guidelines in the neighborhood stops where it does, is because you get into a different development pattern. So you can start seeing, yes, that one, where you get into more of the multi-dwelling, larger structures, the large parking lots. So I would just offer that...
Is what's already there, is what you're kind of trying to say.
Correct.
But so, is this an improvement, I guess, is what I'm asking? Is this going more in the direction of...
Well, I think...
Sort of what are, are plans for...
And I think what I would, what I would say is that, you know, you have a zoning question before you. I think you were asking questions about how your site plan codes...
Right.
...affect site planning versus, versus that. So that's why I think it's different pattern as you move west of even here, you start seeing more parking lots, more taller buildings, bigger buildings, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. Further commission discussion. Commissioner Carpenter?
Man, I was, just like Commissioner Kelly, I was kind of confused by exactly what was going on until after we had a couple of readings and really looking at the map and driving down in there. And it appears, you know, mostly we're just cleaning up the boundary, where the Oriad neighborhood was actually moving outside of a clean line. I don't know why Michigan isn't in the Oriad neighborhood. It's kind of, it's an odd boundary thing, or if it's in the Sunset Hills or something, but...
It's not in a neighborhood.
It's, it's a...
I don't believe.
It's just all, an orphan, which is an odd, it's an odd way that the boundaries were drawn in there, but that's what we're working with.
Commissioner, I might add that the city doesn't create neighborhoods.
I know.
Neighborhoods create neighborhoods and their boundaries, so...
I'm talking to the Oriad neighborhood. It seems like it was an odd place to stop.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that the full commission understands that when you see us map out neighborhoods, those are, those are boundaries that the neighborhood themselves have got together to determine, not the city. What we did through the Oriad Neighborhood Plan is work, and I'm not sure it exactly fit after some of the discussions about what the planning boundaries for the neighborhood plan should be, but it more or less followed the Oriad neighborhood, what they determined were the boundaries. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Well, I understand, having been part of Barker, when we amended the bylaws twice and captured bigger areas and then informed the city that they were now part of our neighborhood. But just that being aside, I like how this is cleaning up that boundary. We do have that straggler street in there, and we're not changing the zoning within the Oriad neighborhood or the overlay district. I, I must say this is a very creative cul-de-sac solution, putting it wrapping around through a parking lot. Has that been, has the fire department, emergency services, and others looked at that?
Oh, yes. Multiple times.
And this is acceptable?
It is.
Okay. Well, it's very creative, I'll have to say that. And, and the only other thing is I'm glad that there is nothing that shows that we're, we're putting a right-of-way or a way for traffic to get off of that cul-de-sac into Michigan or any other place. So again, we're not, we're, we're keeping a street that's outside of the Oriad neighborhood, outside of the Oriad neighborhood, and containing the parking outside, because all those other parking lots are private, except for the street on Michigan, and I don't know. So I, I think it's a good solution and very creative. And when I went down there, I was wondering how long those two buildings had been empty, because they certainly looked like, you know, pretty bad and probably...
Blown.
Not a very, they're probably a public nuisance to that point now. So I, after going through this and wrangling with it, I think I'm at the point that I'm happy with this, and I think it's actually a good way to clean up some issues that have been out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Further commission discussion. I would entertain a motion. Will you allow me? I move that we approve the request to rezone approximately 2 acres from RM12 to RM32 and forward it to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval based on the findings of fact in the staff report.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries 10-0. Onto item 1B. Get down to the wording here. I move that we approve the variance requested for the minor subdivision to reduce the right-of-way from 60 to 50 feet and to approve the variance to terminate Michigan Street in a dead end for properties located at 929 Arkansas and 9133135 Michigan Street and 1000 Emery Road.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the variance, please raise your hand. All those opposed, thank you. Motion carries 10-0. Onto item two, rezoning at 2111 Castle Drive.
Okay. Sandy Day. This is just a single item for you to consider. It is a rezoning, and it is rezoning from an old, pre-2006 zoning district to a current land development code zoning district and conventional zoning. Properties located on the west side of Castle Drive, it's known as Quail Creek Apartments. It is surrounded by similar Alvamar PUD zoning on both the north and the west side, conventional single-family detached residential zoning on the east side of Castle, and planned commercial development to the south, and that includes some mixed uses. Slide shows the existing and surrounding uses. We have a mix of duplex, townhouses. The way these are constructed in today's code would be referred to as multi-dwelling. The detached housing, the golf course, and as well as that planned commercial development... The detached housing, the golf course, and as well as that planned commercial development. While these two parcels are part of that PCD, this piece is developed exclusively with multifamily, and this piece has a mix of both commercial and residential uses. Rising 2020 doesn't necessarily speak directly to this property, but it does talk about the need to facilitate and support infill development and redevelopment in areas that are designated for medium-density residential development. The area is not within a designated neighborhood, as we saw in the last project, but it is generally referred to as the Alvamar neighborhood through planning that we work with, and we've seen this slide a number of times. Part of the original Alvamar in this area was developed as a planned unit development through a number of different processes, anything from a development plan to a use permitted upon review to just straightforward subdivision plating. The proposed project is part of that old PUD. It has a restriction to not more than 75 units, and that is part of both a plat restriction and the approved development plan. The applicant would like to do some infill and some reinvestment in this project, but in order to do that, they either need to go through a process to amend the development plan, or they could rezone to conventional zoning and bring it into a more current designation and follow more current practices. It would be subject to a site plan with notice to property owners, that's administrative, but there is an appeal process to that application as well. Site has been developed since the late 1970s. The concerns that we have heard from the public have to do with existing conditions on street parking, where at times there are vehicles parked on both sides of the public streets and some of the existing traffic. This project doesn't necessarily change that. We did talk with residents about their options to visit with traffic safety, to look at getting one side of the public street designated for no parking. The denial of the request of the proposed zoning does not necessarily prohibit the redevelopment as the applicant has proposed, but it does add quite a bit more process for them by having to amend and come back with a revised preliminary and final development plan versus the rezoning. And then they, if they are approved, they would move forward with their site plan officially. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the rezoning, and it is more efficient from staff's perspective to get rid of some of these very old planned unit developments that were, have, there's no real clear chain of how they were created or established. So it does make any future changes to those projects fairly challenging. That's it.
Thank you, Sandy.
Is the applicant here?
Well, we're still here.
All right. We are too.
So this project started with the owner wanting to upgrade the pool and clubhouse facilities and kind of keep up with the other apartments kind of on the west side of town. As Sandy mentioned, the project, it's been there for a long time. It still does very well. I think he takes great care of it. But the pool probably needs to be rebuilt, and the clubhouse, if anybody remembers it, it's this kind of goofy little, kind of hexagon thing, and really is a, it is a little goofy. So that's where we started, and then we found out it's in the Alvamar PUD, it's 400 acres, and nobody wants to revise that. So we met with staff and certainly think rezoning this property to conventional zoning makes it easier on all of us and certainly more manageable. At Castle and almost 23rd, hard to think that, you know, an RM15, if this didn't exist, would be an unreasonable request. So that's where we started. Certainly, the goal is to add some units to help defray the cost of just building a clubhouse and just building a pool. The concept site plan we submitted, I wish I knew how to zoom in here a little bit better. I think we have been respectful to the properties to the north, so our goal is to build a new pool towards the east side of where the existing clubhouse is now and replace that clubhouse with a new building that would be three stories tall, so impacting essentially our interior of the property. Three stories, 10 units, two bedrooms, and on the lower level, there would be a new clubhouse that would overlook the pool and have a fitness area and an office, and so people can actually find the office right now. They kind of drive around and try to figure out what this little hexagon deal is. And then what we've done is gone to the north and built eight one-bedrooms and two two-bedroom units, and we'd like to build those into the hill, and that's where the section that we provided, I think, really comes into play. So what it shows is the first floor is really built into the hill that's going up to the north, and so the second floor, only one story should be visible at all from anybody on Augusta. And Augusta goes up even further to where you get to the duplexes further north of this property. So by keeping that very low, one-story, you know, again, mostly one-bedrooms, a couple two-bedrooms, I think that that's pretty low impact and pretty respectful of the owners to the north. But it really is about upgrading the facilities a little bit and helping the owner get something a little bit more out of it to kind of keep up with the other apartment projects. Again, I think RM15 is the right answer, and get in and out of Alvamar PUD is a good thing as well. So happy to answer any questions or just wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let you know if we have any. This is a public hearing item. If there's any member of the public who'd care to comment on this agenda item, please step forward, state your name, sign in there.
Good evening. My name is Richard Funk, and I represent myself and my spouse Kara, sitting behind me. We live at 2101 Quail Creek Drive. Do you guys have a map in front of you of this project? Okay. My concern is not about what the project, it's about adding the units, the architect really earns his money trying to fit the units into that space, if you've driven by and taken a look at it. What our concern is, is not making a bad situation any worse as far as parking and traffic is concerned. Your traffic department has already identified that area as being of concern because 22nd Street at the bottom of the map has no parking on both sides. Quail Creek Drive has no parking from 22nd Street up to Augusta on the left-hand side. They allow on-street parking on the right-hand side. The number of units that are proposed, we feel is going to increase the amount of off-street parking. Let me give you an example. We have 10 single-family units, we're putting in 10 parking spaces, one for each bedroom. Let's assume that half of you were married, and you have one-bedroom apartment, and you have two cars. The other half are married, I mean, single, and you all have one car. And we have 13 parking spaces. We have one for each bedroom plus parking spaces for guests. If everybody's home, and most of the problems arise with the traffic in the evening and on weekends, when most people are at home, where are the other two cars going to park? They're going to be off premises on the street. So maybe the condition that you want to put on in single apartment or single-bedroom dwellings is that there'd be one and a half parking places per bedroom rather than just simply the one. Again, saying that your traffic department has already recognized that area as being a problem, hence no parking signs. There would be a problem with more off-street parking where you have no sidewalks. The only sidewalks are on 22nd and up Quail Creek a little bit, no sidewalks the rest of the way on both sides. Your traffic department probably will tell you the street's wide enough to handle everything, but on trash day, people on the left-hand side put their containers in the street, not in the driveway. You have off-street parking on the other side of the street. Your traffic department probably hasn't met a Ram 250 pickup truck pulling a trailer with two lawn mowers on the back and the big side mirrors coming up the street. Somebody's got to stop. You have people that are walking their dogs, you have people that are walking for exercise. On the multi-use area on 2121, you have a bicycle shop, so you have bicycle riders with access to Clinton Parkway. It is an active area simply because of the fact that Quail Creek Apartments are there, plus you have the residential area going up the side with no sidewalks. So in summary, please take a look at what the proposal is as it may affect the traffic and the off-street parking rather than waiting until after it's done and then deal with the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll give the applicant a chance to reply to public comment we received.
Just a few things that, you know, our owner, you know, it's very hard to rent the apartments if people come home and they don't find a place to park. One advantage actually of, under the new parking requirements, I say new from 2006, when this was site planned, two bedrooms and three bedrooms, two bedrooms only provided one and a half spaces, three bedrooms only provided two and a half. Now that is actually one per bedroom. We have 60 of the, of the 72 units, 75 units that are there now, 60 of those are two and three bedrooms. So we have to meet today's standards, which is actually a higher number, so we are scrambling and finding new places to provide parking. Where the pool is now, we're going to build a parking lot that holds 25 cars, and in this plan, we're showing another one towards the east that would add 12 and 10. So we are having to go around to not only obviously provide parking for the new spaces, for the new units, to make sure we meet today's standards. We understand their concern. We actually think Quail Creek Drive, we think part of the parking problem are actually the townhomes on the west side because their driveways are so steep, and they're bigger units, they're four bedrooms, three stories, walkouts. So we're cognizant of that, but our owner's trying to provide as much parking on this side as we can, and certainly we want all of our cars on the property so when people come home and it's night, they've got a place to park. Happy to answer anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring it back up to the commission now for discussion and questions for staff or for the applicant. Commissioner Sinclair.
To staff, Sandy, can I ask you a question? Is it, I just want to get it straight. This project essentially could happen as it's currently zoned. It would just take the owner having to do, get everybody else in the Alvamar PUD on board to amend or revise that document to let them do it?
Yes, and what they would have to do is have a fully developed plan that would come through the public hearing process to make, to make this kind of amendment.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Willie.
Also Sandy, has there been precedent for this of releasing properties from this very large Alvamar?
Yes.
Okay, so the major redevelopment that we had in the center-
That was one of them. I actually have, one of my longstanding work projects is looking at some of these old PUDs where they can be rezoned to conventional zoning. You have a number of subdivisions within even this area that they are simply single-family detached homes, and if we read the project very strictly, they would have to do an amendment to the development, to a final development plan, to add a garage, to add a building addition. And we've had some of those where they have been monumentally complex because you have to have every property owner in, one or two of them can hold out, so yes, there is precedent.
Sandy, can you, I counted an addition of, I think, 40 to 45 parking spaces in this proposal, and with no other parking spaces being removed from the current existing. Is that correct?
I have not looked at this application as a site plan review, so I can't confirm or deny where we're at on the parking. It is, it is a known issue, something we will be looking at. We were looking at some big picture issues as we were moving through the zoning, some of the, some of the topography, the views, the grades, access is not changing. Having three points of entry to a multifamily is pretty unusual, and it's, it's ideal to have that, that much access into the project because you can really disperse that traffic into the street network.
Thank you. Commissioner Culver.
Just a quick comment. As far as the zoning goes, it, I believe it makes sense to take this out of a large PUD and provide the zoning that fits not only the use that exists today and the density, but also to allow the applicant, the owner, to make updates and also maximize the density that they have in front of them by meeting the requirements of parking and also looking at the topography of that so it doesn't infringe on, on some of those other dwelling units surrounding it. So I do think it makes sense to take this out of the PUD and provide that zoning that fits what's there today and allows them to update it and make it competitive with the other properties in the area.
Thank you. Commissioner Sinclair, go ahead.
Question for Sandy again, if that's okay. Traffic concerns were raised, I think by Mr. Funk, and when a site plan is done and all that happens, is a traffic study required for that?
Yes.
Okay. So that'd be an issue that could be addressed at that point.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Sandy, that was my same question. I was giving consideration to what Mr. Funk had said, and I do understand his concern, but I do agree that I think rezoning, it makes sense. I just do have concerns with cramming as many people or units as you can in a space, and I understand the owner wants to maximize their ability to make a profit on their property, but I think that's a valid concern of the neighbors, but I do think rezoning is a good idea.
Thank you. Commissioner Willie.
And can I just clarify or restate, then, that site plan would then come back and be a public process, a public hearing item again, or would that be administrative?
Site plans are administrative, but there is an appeal process. So either if the applicant is aggrieved or if residents are aggrieved by the determination, then that project goes to the City Commission for a public hearing.
So the traffic study that would happen and the parking, as that gets dialed in, there wouldn't be a, a public hearing, it wouldn't come back to us for a public hearing?
No, that, those elements would not.
Okay, it would be to the, to the City Commission?
On appeal. Otherwise, it would be administrative.
Thank you. Commissioner Carpenter.
I just wanted to ask a question addressing the other concern about walkability that you're, you mean drive out there, there are no sidewalks. This is built without sidewalks on any of these streets or for this unit. With the new site plan, is there a requirement for sidewalks as part of it?
There would be probably, yes.
So we would have sidewalks across the street from the townhomes and the duplexes going around this development?
On their side, yeah.
So it depends on the, there's triggers in terms of the type of site plan? We're assuming that it's going to exceed the triggers and be a major development plan? At which time do you apply the full code to the full property? So you would see sidewalks along Quail Creek Drive and-
Augusta.
Augusta, that's the north one.
Because they're adding additional units, moving the pool, adding more parking, you think we're going to go over that?
Yeah, there's certain thresholds in the code that for existing sites, once you exceed a threshold based on, it's lot coverage, building size, then there's a little bit of discretion there that I have in my position to determine whether it's standard or major. So this is a good, it's good to hear the comments so that when we are working through our site plan, if the applicant, for example, proposed more parking than what the code allows, we would be inclined then to take that into consideration. Usually, we're not looking for more parking because that's a stormwater impact, but, you know, hearing the comments from the neighborhood and given the street circumstances surrounding it, then it would be something for us to consider, so it's timely that we hear these comments.
This gives us a very unusual project where if we can actually resolve some parking and walkability issues instead of aggravating them, which is, which is, that's very different for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Willie.
A further parking question can be either for-
A further parking question can be either for Sandy or Mr. Warner. And maybe I'll direct it to Mr. Warner. As you mentioned that now the new parking standard has to be applied, is that for the new units only or does that then apply to the whole project?
Before Sandy says it, it does apply to the whole project. And one I forgot to mention now, we provide visitor parking, which we didn't before. So at eighty plus ninety units, there's going to be ten extra spaces just there for visitor parking. So I think your math is pretty close. I was doing, so the, the new units we're proposing may require thirty-two spaces. I think we're actually closer to sixty that we're adding. So there's twenty-eight that, somewhere in there that are being added as it, just for those existing units. So, so I think that's a good point that Scott and Sandy mentioned, and we'll take a look at those numbers. But the visitor parking is one per ten units that kicks in that wasn't there years ago. Good point.
So, Mr. Warner, before you leave, to address Mr. Funk's concern, and maybe I'm missing it, your response to that is there gonna, there's going to be more parking spaces for individuals in this development, is that, than there are?
Right, so for, if we weren't, if we were site planning this today with no new units, I think there's roughly twenty-six, twenty-eight more spaces that would be required.
Okay.
Plus the thirty-two for the new units. So, so by doing both of those, we should have a better parking situation at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I'm hearing this correctly, in 2006, there was parking requirement changes. Could you tell me how that, what, how it changed?
Just, just as curiosity. So it changed pretty substantially. So for instance, multi, multi-dwelling projects today require guest parking at, at a ratio of one space for every ten units. Prior to 2006, there was no guest parking that was required. We require for multifamily, one parking space per bedroom. The old code would have allowed half a space or two spaces for every three bedrooms. So it was a much different calculation that we did. So it's much, it's much more equivalent to what's being built.
Further commission discussion. Perhaps a motion. Commissioner Culver.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for approval to rezone approximately six point four nine acres from PUD slash UPR, Planned Unit Development District to RM fifteen district, located at twenty-one eleven Castle Drive. And based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding to the city commission for approval.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Payden, thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further commission discussion on item two?
Commissioner Willie.
So if this becomes a, a major redevelopment and it may or may not trigger sidewalk, is it also possible it may or may not trigger street trees? Is that another consideration that comes in or is that because it's an existing development?
That is part of the review is the landscape would include an assessment of street trees, both what is there, what is required under perhaps a previous plan that may be missing, what needs to be added. I would assume that we're going to be talking about those things and more than likely, they're going to be required.
So for my two cents, since we won't get to see this, but I'll tell you anyway, if, if there were a trade-off in terms of cost and price, I think the sidewalks would be a much bigger gain for this. And maybe, you know, have some wiggle room then to give on something else that would cost, you know, similar dollars. But just with the grocery store there and multifamily and walkability, and I know people who live in the neighborhood to the north of Augusta, not right on that road, but the next street north that do walk back and forth to the grocery store, just some, some, you know, for walkability, I would think that that would be a huge gain for that neighborhood, even if something else had to give. But I think it's a fabulous project.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Seeing none, all those in favor of recommending approval of the rezoning, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries ten zero. Onto item number three, CUP for the youth ranch.
Good evening commissioners, I'm Becky Pepper with the planning department. Our subject property is located in the unincorporated portion of the county, adjacent to the eastern city, city limits. It's identified here, highlighted in yellow. This red line represents the city limits. For reference, the property is bound by O'Connell Road to the west and North thirteen hundred Road to the south, which becomes East Thirty-first Street inside the city limits. The property outlined here in black is zoned agricultural district, as are the other surrounding properties that are located in the county. The properties located inside the city limits nearby are primarily zoned residential. The yellow color here represents single-family residential zoning district, the RS seven zoning district. And then the brown colors to the north represent multifamily residential zoning district. As such, the primary land use surrounding the subject property is residential. The area to the west is developed with detached dwellings. To the south, we have rural residential development. And then the property directly to the north is the Heart, Heart of America Teen Challenge, which is a group, a group living facility for teenage boys. Similarly, the subject property contains the O'Connell Youth Ranch, which is another group living facility for boys. The property contains three houses, which hold a maximum of ten boys each with house parents. The property also contains an administration building, a vote tech building, and a barn. This conditional use permit would facilitate the remodel of the, of the barn for use as an event center. Activities that would be held in the event center would include things like weddings, receptions, and similar type activities. And the county zoning regulations classify that type of use as a recreational facility. And this, that use requires approval of a conditional use permit in the agricultural district. Changes to the property, I tried to kind of superimpose the site plan on the existing aerials. So changes to the property would include the addition of a gravel parking lot that would contain a hundred and twenty-four parking spaces, as well as a seating area that would contain a gazebo and a fire pit. Changes to the barn would be internal, interior. They would include the addition of restrooms, a warming kitchen, and a stage. The existing barn is located approximately eight hundred feet from the west property line and the south property line. In addition, there are existing stands of mature trees between that building and the properties to the west and south. With these existing trees and the topography of the land, as well as the distance of the facility from the roadway, there'd be an adequate buffer of the building from, between the building and the residential uses to the west and south. For reference, this is the view from those residential areas onto the O'Connell Youth Ranch property. The top picture shows the view from the residential development to the west, looking at O'Connell Youth Ranch. And then the bottom picture is the properties to the south, looking onto O'Connell Youth Ranch. As you can see, the, the existing trees provide a buffer from the existing barn. In addition to this buffer, the site plan also contains notes that would help mitigate any potential issues with the event center. There is a, a note that would restrict the hours of operation between the hours of seven AM and midnight. The maximum occupancy would be two hundred and eighteen people. And there's also a note that says any music not associated with a wedding, wedding ceremony would be located indoors inside of that, that structure. So staff recommends forwarding this conditional use permit application to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval based on the findings of fact in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Is an applicant or a representative of the applicant here tonight?
Donald Rich, I'm a consulting engineer for the project.
Good evening.
And I agree with what the staff has written up and be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. We'll let you know if we have any.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment on item number three tonight? Neving.
My name's Diana McNish. I live on North thirteen hundred Road. Are you going to be changing the access to this building or will it remain just the single one off of O'Connell Road? Just the single?
Existing roads remain. We can change old roads.
Okay, you're going to put bathrooms in it? Is it going to be lateral fields or?
No, it goes into the existing lagoons. We have two lagoons. We already have a state approval to dump into those existing lagoons. So we'll do that.
So you've got all the utilities you need?
All your toes we need, nothing. And that's been approved by the state on the health department. And we have a massive, massive plan. You might have seen that too.
You can, you can ask us or the staff of site plan issues. We try to address the commission and not each other here in the audience.
Sorry.
Thanks.
It's okay.
But thank you.
Yeah, okay. If I'd known he had my answers, I would have just asked. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any further public comment? All right then. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here to the commission. Commissioner Culver.
I understa, it was stated in the staff report, but can you explain a little bit more why we would have a separate conditional use permit instead of amending the one in place?
Yeah, so the, the O'Connell Youth Ranch, the group home, it has a separate conditional use permit for that, for that use. While this structure was built as part of that conditional use permit and was used, it is used and has been used by those boys, it's going to be used separately for the, the event center. So it's really, the decision was made that it was cleaner to keep them separate so that if there becomes an issue with the event center CUP and that needs to be revoked, it doesn't interfere with the existing CUP for the group home.
That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant.
Sir?
O'Connell Youth Ranch is, has, is licensed by the state, is that correct?
Yes.
For operation, so the state doesn't have any problem with adding this activity to the property? As, as you continue to operate the rest of it as a youth ranch?
None, none.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that, that we're creating a conflict here because?
No conflicts at all.
All right, thanks.
Good question. Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Any further discussion? Questions? Commissioner Willie.
Just kind of as a matter of process, can we make sure that, that Ms. McNish's questions were all answered? If, if the applicant would come up, I think they were about access and the septic. Can you just kind of state that in the microphone for?
We're leaving the existing roads. We're not changing any roads going into it. And there are two lagoons for handling the, the waste from the three houses. And I presented to the state and they approved what short amount of added foot we'd be taking to the lagoons. Everything's been approved by the state on the lagoons.
Thank you very much.
Ms. McNish, your answer, your questions have been answered?
Well, I was going to ask about the water. Are you on well or groundwater?
Wells. One well.
Thank you. Further commission discussion. My only question was, I noticed that there's plenty of screening appears from the south and west. And to the north, I guess, oh, that's thousands of feet away. So I noticed that some of the cars parked facing north would, you know, if they were parked at night, they would be pointing their headlights towards another property without screening. But it looks like those residents?
Parking lot lights, we, we set photometrics. We have no light going beyond twenty feet from the edge of the parking. So we have total, we submitted all that calculation. So we're confining all the parking lot lighting to the property and to the roads.
I was referring more to the headlights of cars. Is there parking lot screening or of any kind even required on the north side of that parking lot? And this is kind of a question for staff as well.
The, the county zoning regulations don't offer as much in the way of landscaping requirements compared to our, the, the city code. They have provided some landscaping, which I think we've included in your packet. That was not requirement of the code. That, that is something they've, they've chosen to do. I will say, I didn't provide the measurement in my presentation, but from the existing barn to that, going directly north to the property line, it's about four hundred feet.
It looks like it's closer to fifteen hundred to the nearest?
Right.
Residential property, so that, that takes care of my concerns. Thank you, sir. Any further commission discussion on item number three? Yes. Yes.
My name is Bernice Wobbling, and I do have a question about the water out there. And he says a well, but we also all have wells. And isn't there a? Will that lower our table water, our water? If they are using a lot of water, will that make a difference with the well level out in our area?
I think that's a question for our county engineering staff. Has that been addressed?
We did have that. We, we send that out to, as part of the review. There were not concerns received from the addition of this use.
Okay.
But won't, won't that make a difference in our well water if they have two hundred people out there for a party using the well water?
I think, I think the commission, the, the county engineers have determined that that would not be an issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you may ask the applicant to address that issue as well to see how they, what they might be using in terms of the well.
We're planning, thank you, probably two functions at the maximum a month. Most of them will be in the neighborhood of one hundred. If we do have the full two hundred and eighteen that's allowed, we just have a prep kitchen. We're not washing any dishes. We're not all using the restrooms and drinking fountain and washing their hands in the kitchen. So we're not prepping any food. Everything's being brought in. So usage of water will be very minimal.
Okay, thank you. So these will be catered events?
Yes, everything will be catered.
That's what I see.
It's only a warming kitchen, hand sinks in there, and that went into the state. So we're not even for wastewater, so we're not using much water at all.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Commissioner Kelly.
I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for the event center space at O'Connell Youth Ranch.
Second. The action will, further action required will be approval by the Board of County Commissioners. So we do have to recommend that to them, right?
I'm just reading what the staff recommendation says.
There's, there's?
It should be different.
It will require that recommendation.
Yes.
All right.
At thirteen twenty, at sixteen twenty-three North thirteen twenty Road too. So yeah, all that. Got it, Denny?
Yeah, still second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further commission discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all those in favor of recommending approval of the CUP, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries ten zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Onto item number four, preliminary plat on Maple Street.
Good evening, everybody. I believe I've met most of you over the last few months, but to those who I have not met, my name is Luke Mortensen. I'm the newest city county planner here in the department.
Welcome.
Thank you. And so I will be presenting on Maple Street preliminary plat. Here we go. So just to start, like I said, we'll be looking at the preliminary plat for seven eighty-two and seven seventy-two Maple Street. It'll be a three-lot subdivision on just over half an acre up in North Lawrence. The goal is to end up with two buildable lots to the RS seven zoning district standards. And then this was prepared? And then this was prepared by BG Consultants on behalf of Lawrence, Kansas Rentals, which is the property owner of record. So like I said, the subject property is up in North Lawrence. Maple Street is below the railroad tracks, I believe, and we'll get a little bit closer here. So the subject properties are zoned RS7, as is much of this area of North Lawrence. Across Maple Street is IG, which is General Industrial. But as you'll see in the next slide, there's mostly single-family residential up there. Then, of course, there are some other pockets of different zoning in North Lawrence, but the surrounding area is predominantly RS7. Like I just mentioned, land use, so this is the surrounding land use map. The yellow signifies detached, single-family dwelling, which is the predominant land use up there. Across the street, there is some, it's used for, looks like it's used for storage at 749 and 789, but again, predominantly detached dwelling. So this preliminary plat addresses a few different items, and we'll get to them in a minute, but this is just a snapshot of the two parcels as they are right now. 772, obviously, on the west, 782 on the east. And that's Maple Street to the north. So the first element that this preliminary plat addresses is the plating of the shaded red area. The reason this is going through the major subdivision plating process is because of this little parcel. It's not part of the northeast central subdivision that is a lot of North Lawrence. It's currently unplatted. That's not unusual for North Lawrence. There are a number of unplatted parcels up in that portion of the city. And this is, the unplatted portion will become part of 782, or is acting as part of 782. So on the left is 782 Maple. Currently, on the right is 782 with the addition of that 20-foot by about 131-foot unplatted parcel once it becomes platted. The second element of this preliminary plat deals with a lot line shift between 782 on the east and 772 to the west. In order to bring one of the new lots up to dimensional standards for the RS7 district, we need 60-foot width. And when we shift the lot line three feet to the east in that upper portion, that will give us the 60 feet we need on 772, on one of the new lots on 772. As you can see, 782 maintains the dimensional standards that the RS7 district requires. It's just the three feet in the northern half. So the second element that this preliminary plat addresses is the lot shift, lot line shift and the splitting of 772. Currently, those are two, the parcel is two lots of record. The county combined them in 1988 for taxing purposes. Again, that's pretty common across the city. On the left is, as it is today, the 50 feet would not be a standard, would not fit the dimensional standards for the district. With the lot line shift on the right, you can see the lot, the shift will go six, about six feet to the west, and that will give us 60 feet for both lots, which is what's required. It will also give us enough square feet. 7,000 is the minimum required for the district. Staff review, all three lots will conform to the RS7 district standards. I've said it a couple of times, 7,000 square feet is the minimum, and 60 feet width is the minimum. All three lots will comply. And as the map showed, detached dwelling is the prominent use in the district. The two lots that 772 comprised, will comprise, will be scraped for new residential development. 782 on the east, there's a structure and a garage that will remain, so it will be just the two additional detached dwellings. There are no easements on any of those lots, and there's no proposed easements as part of this preliminary plat. And all three lots access existing public utilities, which are located in the street right of way in Maple Street, or below Maple Street. Further action required pending approval tonight would be submittal and beginning the final plat process. That would mean administrative approval by the planning director. And then pending approval, and with necessary signatures, it goes on to final recording with the register of deeds. And then, of course, building permits would need to be pulled prior to any development. No development has been proposed at this time. And we have notes through some of the reviews of requirements that will be necessary when building permits are pulled. Driveway culverts were requested by Public Works, and they also requested that the applicants make note that there will be no protest of possible future sidewalk dedication. So staff recommendation, staff finds that this preliminary plat for the Maple Street subdivision, as conditioned, is in conformance with the standards of the Land Development Code subdivision regulations. And again, my name is Luke, and I'll be available for questions. I believe the applicant is here tonight for questions as well.
Thank you, Luke. Let you know if we have any questions. Would the applicant come forward, please? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm David Hamby with BG Consultants. It's a very simple project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let you know if we have any. This is a non-public hearing item, but is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on it? We're always anxious to hear your comments, if any. Well, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here to this commission for questions and comments, discussion, and so forth. Lot of housekeeping items tonight, cleaning up.
I'll make a comment and a motion. Mr. Hamby, I can't believe you said this was simple. This is Luke's first time up in front of this. How dare you? How dare you, sir? Luke did a great job. I'll make the motion for approval of the preliminary plat on the Maple Street subdivision.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We have a motion. Second, Commissioner Sands, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the preliminary plat? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries 10-0. Thank you. We'll make it harder for you next time, Luke.
Well, I would like to say, hi, Mom and Dad.
He's got a watch party going on.
Look at that. That's awesome.
I didn't hear Maste erupted applause.
They're coming.
Let them know, let them know they've probably tripled our viewership. All right. Thank you. We have a miscellaneous item tonight regarding our bylaws.
Just quickly, commission, an update on your bylaw efforts. Just to recap, we know that the city commission has gone through a strategic planning exercise, and one of the things they are seeking is better alignment between all of our boards and commissions. So we have been reviewing some of our bylaws of the many boards and commissions that we staff. And we brought to you a couple of months ago, a set of bylaws for your consideration, and you approved them. And part of the city commission's efforts was that they wanted to also see the bylaws of our boards and commissions before they are effective. And we presented those bylaws to the city commission, and there was one person in the public that got up and commented on them, pulled it from the consent agenda, and wanted to comment on a couple of aspects of them. One aspect was dealing with the three versus five-minute rule. And so I advised the city commission of why we recommended that change and why you approved that change. And the city commission upheld that bylaw change for the planning commission. The other comment had to deal with general public comment. I've highlighted here, the bylaws you put up to the city commission actually had that general public comment just before adjournment of the meeting, because it's so rare, I think, that we get any public comment. But because of the city commission, at that time, the public's comment that it would align actually better with the city commission agenda management, and because of the importance to be heard and not sit through sometimes hours' worth of testimony on other agenda items, and because it's such a rare event that we get public comment, I advise city commission that I thought that would be a friendly amendment to your bylaws. I hope you don't prove me wrong tonight, but they effectively adopted them or approved the bylaws as you sent to them with this one change. So we, I'm showing you here that we would move general public comment back up, much like it was managed tonight by Chair Struckoff, in terms of asking for public comment right after we do our house cleaning business. And so with that, if you agree and it's acceptable to you, we'll keep your bylaws on the county commission agenda for next Wednesday, where I will again present to them and ask them for the approval of your bylaws.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion about the bylaws? Commissioner Willie?
Just, I think we'll have to be, because it's new and we haven't dealt with it this way, we'd love to be extra clear with people that when they come for public comment on an item, that they don't have to speak kind of into this vacuum, into this kind of space before we've started, that they, when they come for a specific item, that there is a dedicated time for that, so that people don't get confused if they haven't been here before for comment.
Yeah, I think that's something we may be able to clarify on our brochure, something the chair can clarify as we start the meeting. And again, my assumption is that that public comment is held to three minutes, like it is at the city commission meeting as well. Pretty rare that we get it at this commission.
Yes, I was caught a little off-guard by it on the menu tonight, but I think, I just tried to make it clear that if you're not here, if you have something to say other than regarding a specific agenda item, that's what it's for. All right. Commissioner Sands?
Scott, you mentioned that there is still a time for the general public comment, but I must have missed it when I read this?
It's not, so it's not specifically spelled out in the bylaws.
It's saying, appearing before the commission.
Right. Just extending the time that we've allowed for any amount of testimony on any item, I believe should be the time for general public comment. Again, that also, in keeping with the city commission's goal to keep this body in greater alignment with them, they afford general public comment three minutes. And typically, also, just for your information, usually it's not the time to debate items. Many times, what they will do at the city commission level is just transfer those comments to staff for review and maybe future agenda.
We are receiving them, not acting or responding from here. All right. Thanks, Scott. Is that it? Is that all there is?
That's it.
Looks like that's it. I think we just received, oh, the minutes. The bylaws, I mean. I don't think we have an action on that tonight.
You know, it may not hurt to make a motion to affirm your, the city commission's revisions to your bylaws.
Okay. And they will, that, those revisions will also, will be at the county commission.
Correct.
Okay.
In motion, just like that?
All right.
We uphold the revision that the city commission gave us for our bylaws.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand.
No.
Okay. All opposed? One.
Nine-one.
From Commissioner troublemaker.
How are we handling the next meeting?
Yeah, there's, and Chair, if you want to describe the circumstances?
Both I and the vice chair will be gone from the Monday night meeting in April. We have two nights, and so it will be necessary on that night, from amongst the commissioners that are in attendance, to elect an interim chair. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. You can nominate, self-nominate, probably at any time, including tonight, but the vote must occur among the commissioners that are in attendance that night. I think we'd ask that that all happened at that meeting. I think we'll even put it on the agenda since we know of it. Sometimes it happens, you don't know, and then we have to do it on the spur of the moment. But since we know, be thinking about that, and we'll put that on the agenda to hold an election for that night's chairman, chairpersonship.
We will both be back for the Wednesday night meeting.
Wouldn't it be easier for you both just to cancel your trip?
Or cancel me.
Well, you know, I was all in favor of rezoning the entire Almar PUD, but you know, if you want to make things difficult.
It's a busy month for the chair and vice chair with their trip to the national conference in New Orleans. And, but we, the rest of us are taking a break for mid-month in April. We'll be back at it in May to talk to you about some commercial design guidelines and that transportation plan, so.
All right. And with that, we are adjourned.